Meeting of the Planning Board for October 1st, 2020 to order. And if you all could please join me, we would like to recite the Fudge of Allegiance now. I pledge allegiance to the
States of America. And to which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It's good for us to sing in concert with one another when we're not in the same room, but we try.
I was just gonna say, I'm glad we're not a chorus.
Okay. Um, we, um, next we're gonna have a roll call for attendance.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Here.
Member Gaffney.
Here.
Member Españo.
Here.
Member Rappaport.
Present.
Thank you, Liz. This is Barbara again. The town of Burlington holding the October 1st, 2020 Planning Board is a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So the meeting is held via Cisco Webex. The WebEx link is http:townofberlincoln.webs.com. The meeting number is 173-041-2520. The meeting password is 2020. You can also join by phone, 617-315-0704. And the meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment when recognized by the chair. Questions can be asked via WebEx, phone, Facebook Live, WebEx Chat, and at email@planning@berlincoln.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please call Planning Staff at 781-270-1645 or email at planning@berlincoln.org. And a reminder that all votes will be taken by a roll call vote.
This is Barbara again. Thank you, Kristin. Um, we do have a few continuances tonight, so we're going to start with those. If I may have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board. Whoops, continue public hearing petition to amend zoning bylaws. Is that the one?
Um, we just need to take item 8A out of order, please.
So done.
Second.
Thank you. Item 8A is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2 definitions and Article 4 use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to signage submitted by the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Um, do you, do you vote to take item 8A out of order first?
That is all we voted so far.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call for that.
Yes.
Oh, so go ahead, vote the roll call.
We're all on the same page. So Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Um, Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay, I, I did read this item. Item 8A, we are looking, I'm looking for a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of November 5th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
For Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to take item 8B out of order?
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes. Item 76A is a continued public hearing application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan. 108 Muller Road. Edward and Elena Yivitzkaya are the applicants.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 15th, 2020.
Can I quick just for discussion, Madam Chair?
Of course.
Um, I just wanted to say that this, um, this matter was just recently been continued. We didn't get notice until late this afternoon. So I just want to make sure that we keep an eye out if anyone that we might think, um, was interested at the last time, just to make sure. Jen, if you have any, um, knowledge of people that may be joining us, just, um, call up, make sure we remind people since we, uh, didn't do a, uh, well, we may have done, uh, um, uh, email, uh, late this afternoon, but just in case people didn't get it. I keep an eye on that. We will be discussing it, um, at the next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Um, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to take item 8C out of order.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, um, so item 7C is a continued public hearing application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 0 Birch Street. James Danaher is the applicant. And before we do the next roll call, I'm just gonna remind Vice Chairman Impemba and Member Clerk Raymond to take themselves off mute, so we can hear you.
Um, and also I just, uh, Madam Chair, for a minute, um, this also, I know I had mentioned, we were, um, I think at the last meeting, where we're looking for a revised letter from the Building Department. We did get that, again, late this afternoon. Um, so the applicant decided to continue this morning since we hadn't had it by late yesterday afternoon. There is a, um, legal matter that Town Council has, um, addressed with the Building Department and therefore the, we will explain, um, the new, the the new finding in the letter at the next meeting. Um, but it was just too, um, too soon to get that wrapped up for tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to
Okay, can I just ask a question? Barbara, I didn't, was not, was mine on mute? I, I, I thought it was off. So did I not get heard in any of those votes?
We can hear you now. I did not hear you before, but maybe it was just me.
No, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, weird, okay. It was off mute, so I, 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 I wasn't aware that they didn't hear it, so. I did vote, I voted yes for all of them, so.
Okay, so noted. Thanks, Joe.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 15th, 2020.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond. Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, um, all right, those are all our continuances. Um, we do not have any executive session, so next we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the listening audience who is here to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna move on to announcements.
Sure, so, um, this is Liz, um, and mandatory water ban is still in effect for everybody, so, um, please see the town website for more detailed information. There are certain days that you're allowed to water your lawn and that you aren't. Um, there will be a Planning Board Sculpture Park Subcommittee meeting on October 6th at 7:30 a.m., and the link to this virtual meeting will be found, um, via the town calendar, um, on the town's website. Um, uh, Columbus Day holiday, um, is October 12th, and all town offices will be closed. Um, the last day to register for the state election is October 14th by 8:00 p.m. Um, our intrepid town clerk, Amy Warfield, has set up a, um, a table outside of town hall, so that if you want to register to vote, you just fill everything out and put it in the mailbox. Um, so if you need to do that, please come by and make sure you're registered. And the last announcement, um, and I think Kristin can speak a little bit more on this, is the staff would like to recommend we start the Planning Board meeting October 15th at 6:00 p.m.
Um, so I can speak more to that. Uh, so we have two matters for which, um, we had requested that council attend. Council has another, um, matter that will likely take most of the evening that begins at 7:00. Um, so therefore, if we did want council at our next meeting for those two, he has asked that we, um, try to accommodate a little bit earlier for that, those two items. Um, I also will note the next presidential, uh, debate, if it actually happens, is also that important. But anyway, I just wanted to, um, we can discuss it later during discussion, but wanted to highlight that for any, um, for you guys as well as, um, any viewing audience. So if, we don't need to take a vote now if anyone
I can't miss the presidential debate because it'll be just too stressful for me, so we gotta find a way to get that done early.
Okay, so if we, I mean, if we start at 6, we can accommodate council schedule as well as chair schedule.
And be out an hour early, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes?
Uh, I just had two other announcements, if I could.
Please go ahead.
Two meetings next week that Planning Board members may be interested in, and one is the, uh, signed by law Subcommittee Zoning Bylaw Review Committee is meeting on Monday at 5:30. Uh, salary is guaranteed. We'll be out by 7 o'clock. I know this town meeting continues that night also. And on Wednesday, the Housing Partnership Committee is meeting at 6 o'clock. Those are both, uh, Wednesday the 7th, by the way. Those are both going to be remote meetings, and, uh, there should be any further information on how to sign in on the, uh, town's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
And, and Ernie, also, you make a very good point. Town meeting is continuing to Monday, and, um, articles, we left off, uh, Article 13 was the last one, so we'll start with all of our articles in Betsy Hughes Self-Storage, 14, 15, 16, and 17, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
Just one question, this is Bill. Just a clarification on the announcements. The, the mandatory water ban, from my understanding, is there's no days that you can do watering. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, okay, so, um, and just the other thing for that last day of registration, that's state, and that's combined federal and state for that election, last day of register?
Um, according to the town calendar, it was just, um, the last date for the state election. I have to double check with Amy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, we do not have any legal notices or not at all, so we're moving on to administrative matters. Our first administrative matter is item 7A, a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 56 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlecks Realty LLC is the applicant. So, um, whoever is here representing Burlecks, please speak up and identify yourselves.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Tom Murphy for the, um, petitioner. Um, just to bring the board up to, up to date since our last meeting, since then, um, my client has appeared before the Board of Health. They voted 2050, and we're gonna forward their comments. Uh, CONCOM has issued the Erosion Sedimentation Control, uh, Permit that tapped into October 24th. Uh, Jim Decoulis, who's the, the engineer who's also on the call, um, has furnished the, uh, staff with an updated plan, uh, which included some additional information that they requested. And, um, some other documentation was also submitted to staff, so I think from our standpoint, um, we've, um, submitted everything that we've been asked to submit, and we've, um, finalized things with the Board of Health and the CONCOM, which were the two outstanding issues last time, so. Mr. Decoulis and my client, George Katsarakas, are both on the call, are happy to answer any calls, or if there's anything else that you need from us, uh, please let us know, but, um, we're obviously, uh, eager to move this along. My client has a, a tenant who's itching to get in there to do his renovation work so we can get going, so. Uh, with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you, and you let us know what you need from us.
Thank you, Tom. Kristin, would you like to add something to that?
Sure, so at our last meeting, we were still awaiting, um, uh, many, many of the departments. Um, Board of Health, Conservation, um, and others, we are still awaiting the confirmation from Eversource that they've been notified. Um, so, uh, at this point, they have gone, as Tom had mentioned, they have gone through those boards, they have been approved. Um, and we have, uh, we, uh, so anyway, we, we are comfortable moving forward. Um, a question I did have on this, um, so, on some of the updates, so. All right, I'm just looking at the plan. So, um, I did want to just ask to run through a little bit of, oh, the proposed curbing type in the areas of, um, the new, new parking lot areas. Um, just because I wasn't clear on that, and I wanted to have the board discuss that. Um, they did identify the two play areas for the two daycares. Um, and then the other thing that we were looking for is just to ensure a timeline for completion. Um, as you guys are aware, site plan special permits are good, um, for a year, um, and then they can be extended, so we just wanted to, um, reiterate that, and also just if there was reason for delay, just make sure that the, to the chair, the chairman, um, uh, request that the applicant just present to the board the, um, any reason for, that the work has not been done, so. Um, so anyway, we hope that it can move everything forward, and we look forward to the improved drainage system on site. Right now, there is not much of anything, so. So with that, I guess I'll ask, um, the engineer or the, someone from the applicant team, just to walk us through a little bit of, uh, the, the curbing types on site, and especially, um, behind any drainage structures that is, are adjacent to curbing.
I'll defer to Mr. Decoulis on that, Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name's Jim Decoulis. Um, I'm the engineer, as Tom mentioned, and, uh, as to Kristin's question about curbing, uh, the predominant curb type will be a Cape Cod Batuminous Berm. Uh, we are proposing, uh, a, a vertical granite curb in the area where the handicap parking area is. You can see where the rain garden is and the two handicap spaces. Uh, there would be a, a, a vertical granite curb in that area only. Uh, the rest of the parking would be, uh, Cape Cod Batuminous Berm. Um, and that would extend, um, in the new parking area, uh, where the stormwater infiltration field is being proposed, and over to where the front door is in the upper level, there where Catch Basin Number One is. Um, and, and just to, on point of correction, uh, Kristin mentioned that Eversource, uh, um, was, we were, or you were awaiting notification that Eversource has been notified. Um, Eversource has been notified now for well over six weeks. Um, we have been struggling, uh, through their large organization and management structure to get a decision out of Eversource to approve the project. Um, so, uh, we have been in, uh, ongoing conversations and discussions with Eversource, but we're just waiting their final approval. They've been notified, well, uh, you know, like I said, six weeks ago. The, uh, Liz had asked to update a parking table. I don't know if you could zoom out on this, uh, Kristin or Liz, who's controlling. Uh, we've got a parking table that's in the upper right-hand corner. Um, we've identified the tenants that are existing and proposed. There's, uh, the music, the Real School of Music, as you can see in the top. Uh, there's three, uh, four different office uses. Uh, there's the, a warehouse use of only 1,500 square feet, and then there are the two daycare, uh, uses. Another note that we put on the plan was the, uh, ratio of impervious surface area. Uh, 50% of the total property is, is pervious, and 43% is impervious. And then, uh, we also, uh, noted the location of each one of the two daycare facility outs, outdoor uses, uh, on the left side, on the south side of the building. Uh, the newer daycare operation is known as Communities United, Inc., and the existing current daycare facility is School for Early Education. So, uh, that's, that's what we have, uh, recently, uh, revised since the last meeting, and I think we've addressed everything that the Planning Department has requested. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, if I can just weigh in based on what Mr. Decoulis just outlined. And Brady, if you can, uh, zoom out just a little bit, so I can see the upper parking lot. Um, so I guess, so I acknowledge that most of the curbing on site is Cape Cod Berm or Batuminous. What, um, has been traditional for you guys, I appreciate the vertical around the handicap spaces. Um, we typically have vertical behind any drainage structure where the grade drains to that structure, just to ensure the, um, that the flow, um, doesn't, you know, if there's some issue with the curbing, that everything still works, as well as around the dumpster enclosure area. So my, I, I guess my recommendation, and I don't, I have vertical granite question, question mark in the decision right now, but our recommendation is that they extend vertical granite, um, on, where's my cardinal direction here? But anyway, the, the Middlesex Turnpike side, um, of the top parking lot, at least, um, definitely in that corner, that bottom corner near where the dumpster is, as well as that catch basin. Um, potentially because there's a catch basin in the other corner, just along that row. Um, and I just wanted to get some feedback from the board as to, um, you know, if, if you agree to that, but that would be our recommendation for, um, vertical along that row and around the dumpster area.
Excuse me, Kristin, would you be willing to live with the sloped granite in that, in those areas?
Um, I think so for the long run, but right behind the catch basin and the dumpster, I think we're gonna push for the vertical. If you want to transition through the run, um, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. All right, so we, um, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Uh, this is Barbara again. I'm just gonna quickly see if the board members have any questions they want, or things they want to weigh in on. Joe Impemba.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Paul Raymond. Okay. Okay, Ernie Cavino?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and traditionally, we've looked for granite curbing throughout, and if not throughout, at least around the islands and behind the, catch basins around the dumpster, and in this case, I noticed that we have that there is a rain garden, and I would say definitely in the area of the rain garden, you, I think you want something so you don't end up with pieces of asphalt in the rain garden itself. I really can't tell from the plan exactly what that story, what that situation is, but there looks to be at least one catch basin in that area. And so continuing that, uh, vertical granite run, uh, so that it protects the rain garden, in other words, goes to the, if north is up to the west and, and, uh, and then to the north along the parking space that has a number 10 in it, probably wouldn't be a bad idea. Uh, and unless somebody can correct me. I, I don't know if I'm looking at that correctly or not. Kristin, maybe? I don't know.
Um, Ernie, Ernie, I agree with you.
Yep.
Yeah, Ernie, I agree with you. I think that's a vulnerable area, and that's what, what our intent was, because that's gonna be highly susceptible to snow cloud damage, that area.
Right, right, definitely. Okay, thank you. All set, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ernie. Uh, Mike Españo.
All set, Madam Chair.
Bill Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I would comment is on, uh, just taking the, the site on Google Map, um, is that, uh, maybe we should consider some landscaping over on the, uh, right-hand side of that, over near the, where it says a stone slope retaining well. So when you, when you pass by there and you look at that, you're just gonna see that, so maybe we can, uh, suggest some landscaping similar to maybe what you see along Middlesex Turnpike, maybe where, uh, like the archer is. That's a, it's a good example. It's a nice, uh, landscape architecture to soften up that parking lot right against the, uh, Middlesex Turnpike there.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, Brenda Rappaport.
Uh, Brady, can you expand, um, just, uh, uh, zoom out, I guess, a little bit? If you would, please. Okay, no, I don't have anything to, to add, um, just to mirror, uh, Member Gaffney's, uh, comment. Uh, I would like to see additional landscaping as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. This is Barbara, and I have no additional comments, but I will agree with Member Gaffney's comment about additional landscaping. So if we can add that to our decision, I think we're probably ready to go.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. Um, as far as the landscaping goes, is that something we should just work with staff on, or do you have something in particular in mind, or?
Personally, I would feel comfortable if you work with staff on that.
Okay.
Is, if the, if anyone in the board wants to disagree, speak up.
Well, well, this is Bill. I, I just, I think my, my history here in the short period of time I've been on the board is that, uh, normally when we request landscaping, we're not specific to that. It tends out to be the, the smallest landscaping they could ever put on these places, so maybe if we have guidelines, um, of what to put there for some substantial landscaping, I think that'd be great, or if maybe staff wants to blow by me, uh, prior to, to that, I'd be fine with that.
So how we'll write it, we'll say landscaping. I mean, Bill, you were pretty specific about the landscaping, like in front of the archer, which I think is a good visual cue, but we can say, um, landscaping to be referred by the planning director in consultation with the chairman or designee.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. If that's the case, I think I'm ready for a motion. Anyone? Okay, no one wants to make a motion, huh?
Okay, uh, you want to, want to motion? I'll make a motion to approve the request for approval of a minor engineering change for properly located at 56 Middlesex Turnpike to relocate and reconstruct the upper western parking lot with proper stormwater infiltration, realigning the lower southeastally parking area for improved vehicular ingress and egress. Improved ADA parking and other improvements is reflected on the red line site plan entitled Proposed Conditions Plan. 56 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington, Mass., prepared by Decoulis and Company, dated July 23rd, 2020, revised to September 28th, 2020, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following terms and conditions as amended and printed.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Vice, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, so am I correct in, in thinking we're skipping all the way ahead to page nine, number eight?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so our next item is
Make a Sorry, make a motion to make a motion to take item 8D and I E, A T E together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Uh, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Item 8D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.14 of the zoning bylaw, wireless communication facility near 49 Middlesex Turnpike. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC care of central line communications is the applicant. And item 7E is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 8.5.8 of the zoning bylaw, small cell wireless facilities outside of rights-of-way near 49 Middlesex Turnpike. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC care of, care of central line communications is the applicant. is the applicant. So hello, and who do we have representing the applicant tonight?
My name is Ed.
I'm sorry, just, I just wanna make sure for the viewing audience, because I know we had a lot of interest, this is the planning director, and I certainly want to have the applicant present. But we will not be voting tonight. Tonight, we are very much having an opening presentation from the applicant, and we'll be taking questions from obviously all the board members, as well as anyone in the audience. So, but we will not be closing this matter tonight. We were, had some concern that that would be the case. So just, everyone, sit back and listen and make sure we ask our questions. So with that, I'll let Mr. Parry go ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Edward Parry, it's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney of Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. I actually reside in the Providence office. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board for hearing our application. I understand from our discussions with Kristin and staff, and the meeting we held with the departments, that this is the first small cell facility that the town has dealt with. So I'd be happy to go into as great a detail and to answer whatever questions any board members and members of the public have. But just to give you a brief background, the planning board is probably very familiar with what we refer to as macro sites. These are sites that are located on towers, water tanks, tall buildings, other structures throughout the United States. Certainly Burlington has its share of them also. In this instance, I'm here representing AT&amp;T with respect to this facility. The macro sites, as the networks have matured, you know, are providing coverage, but with the advent of data in all of these devices, iPhones and Samsung devices that eat up data, the networks are overwhelmed, and the solution to deal with that was to provide additional capacity. So in this instance, AT&amp;T has designed a system where they can install small, we refer to them as small cell facilities. These are different than the macro sites. They typically have one antenna, and they need to be closer to those using their devices so that it can maintain low power, and likewise, the device itself doesn't have to struggle to make that connection. So in this instance, we found a utility pole, which is a typical type of installation for a small cell facility. We locate a small antenna, it's a 24-inch antenna at the top of the pole. The antenna itself is 10 inches in diameter. On the side of the pole, I don't know if, can we flip down to the plan? There we go. Thank you very much. This is perfect. So this is the photo said, just to give you a sense of what we're looking at. The first slide you're looking at was a kind of a locus from Google Earth, to show you where the location is. But we're basically right outside, right outside of Ned's towing. And in fact, the pole is on that property, owner's property. So the components of the small cell, you'll see at the top, proposed antenna, that's the antenna I was just referring to. There are cables that run from the antenna down to our radio equipment, which you can see down in kind of that gray box, about 11 or 12 feet up from the ground. Thank you. And that's where the radio units go in so that it can connect to the network. Below that is an electrical meter with a shut-off. These, you know, installations require electrical power and fiber to connect to AT&amp;T's network. So basically, the signal emits from the antenna, it will, the folks that have AT&amp;T will connect to that antenna, and will go into the radio system, which then broadcasts into the AT&amp;T network. So it's a very minor installation, very low power. In this instance, EverSource owns the pole, they'll own the pole after. The pole will be replaced with a newer pole for structural reasons, and we provided a structural report for that new pole. We've provided a bunch of information, our FCC licenses, our emissions report, that shows just how low power these are, and it will comply with the FCC regulations with respect to exposure to emissions. Frankly, there's not that much more to the installation itself. It probably makes sense to see what interests folks, board members and members of the public. I do have a couple of folks with me on behalf of AT&amp;T, I'm the site acquisition agent. We also have our engineer from Hudson Design. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward. We're doing these small cell facilities throughout Massachusetts. There are gonna be many, many of these small cell facilities. I have no doubt that Burlington will see more of these as other communities have. And being it's the first one, I'm sure there are lots of questions, so I will close down for now, and I'm happy to respond to any questions or address any issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Barbara again. I'm going to poll the board to see if they have any questions, but I just wanted to assure people who are listening, who are members of the public, that they will get a chance to speak as well. I'm gonna have the board speak first, and then we'll be calling on members of the public who are listening in. So you will have a chance to speak as well. Joe, would you like to go first?
Yep, just a couple of quick questions. One is, what is the plan for these small cells? How, what's the proximity between the next small cell, or if they're taking, if they're taking, I guess, waves from a, from a regular tower? How, how close will these be to a regular tower? And then how close will they be to the next small cells in the ultimate plan?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. So the cell, the cell site itself doesn't interact with what I call the macro sites, so those, you know, larger facilities that AT&amp;T has, other than being, you know, part of the network. So these small cells will offload some of the traffic from the macro sites. So the macro sites put out a large footprint of coverage, and, you know, as your phone connects to the footprint of coverage, further away you are from it, the more difficult it is to maintain a signal and a connection. So when the network gets overwhelmed, say this area that we're posting the small cell in, has a lot of traffic on it, and it's pulling too much from the macro sites, those, everybody suffers on the macro sites, everybody's devices slow down, the data rates drop. This boosts the capacity so that folks in this area would go onto the small cell facility, alleviating the traffic load on the macro site, wherever that happens to be. Now, a lot of this, just like with the macro sites, is dependent on topography, foliage, you know, these use the same frequencies as the macro sites do. And we've, you know, provided all of that information in our radio frequency report. Generally, these are good for coverage for about a quarter of a mile, could be more, could be less. Again, you know, it depends on number of users, topography, foliage, you know, I'm not gonna repeat myself, but, you know, quarter mile, third of a mile radius, which, you know, would give you a, you know, maybe a half a mile, two-thirds of a mile diameter. So that's what you're looking for as far as coverage. Now, I don't, I don't think necessarily that the carriers and specifically AT&amp;T is going to place one of these facilities every quarter mile, but there will be densification, I have no doubt. Just looking at the technology and what's coming forward, there will be more of these sites. But it's really a matter of trying to address areas that, in this instance, AT&amp;T is suffering in its coverage capacity, and you have, you know, two other major carriers likewise that are, you know, will be looking to do this also.
Okay. So this is not getting any wave at all from the large, from the larger cell towers? It's getting its own source from, it's getting its own source from another, from another, you know, from, from whatever you provide to it?
Yeah, I mean, these are mini sites, yeah, these are mini independent sites. So this site will be connected to a network through fiber. So, you know, to be, just like a macro site...
So it's fiber, it's fiber that brings it to, you're bringing it, it's, it's, it's due from the fiber, and it's not getting any bounce off of the towers?
Correct.
Yes, it is.
There's no, there's no direct connection between the macro tower and this, other than it's part of the network. The macro tower facility may in fact benefit because of it, because it will, you know, take down some of the traffic on the macro site.
Right. But there's no, but there's no connection between the two?
Other than the fiber and AT&amp;T's network, no.
Right, okay. I'm saying no airwave. There's no airwave between the two of them?
No, there's no microwave hop back to...
Okay, okay. And then, so, so emissions-wise, emissions-wise, if you're standing underneath this, how does that differ from standing underneath a regular tower? And I know the waves, the, the, the frequencies don't necessarily go directly down, but the closest you could be to the ground and be affected by emissions on a tower versus here, because I know the towers are supposed to be 500, a minimum of 500 feet from, you know, daycares and, you know, it's supposed to be distances from residential and all that stuff. How does that, how do those regulations affect this? And what kind of emissions are we getting off of this versus off of the tower, the towers themselves?
Yep. So this is, this is much lower power coming out of the small cell facility. We did submit an emissions report. So if you're standing at the bottom of the pole, you're getting less than 1% of the maximum permissible. That's, that's if you're right there. You know, standing underneath a tower, you know, the emissions go out, well, yeah, the power goes out towards the horizon. So under the tower is probably one of the lowest areas, but there will be a point, you know, with physics, you know, it could be 500 feet away from a tower. But the FCC does not have any...
Well, that's what I'm saying. At the closest point you could be, at the closest point you could be, you understand what I'm saying? The way the wave frequency goes, the closest point that you would be affected is what I'm talking about, not standing right under, but whether it's, like you said, 500 feet out or whatever it is. I'm wondering if you were standing at that point, where it actually hits the ground, versus standing next to this, where it hits the ground?
Yeah, the further away from the pole you get, the less emissions there'll be. This is a small cell facility, low power. So the power really drops off, and that's why you need, you know, more of these. It doesn't penetrate buildings very well. So that, there are lots of limitations, but it does provide that capacity. So even if you were standing, you know, if you, if you could hover above the antenna and you were standing, you know, 12 feet away, you'd still be between 5 and 10% of the maximum. So there's just no way that this is going to exceed any emission standards that the FCC has promulgated.
Right. So how do these, how do these, you know, you understand the regulations that Burlington has with the towers as far as, you know, proximity to daycares and all that stuff? How would that affect the small cells? How would those, how would those regulations affect the small cells? And/or do they at this point in time?
Yeah, they don't. So Burlington has a, I don't know, they've treated small cell facilities in two ways. One, when the facility is in the public right-of-way, and two, when it's not in the public right-of-way. We're before the planning board because we're not in the public right-of-way. This is on the property where Ned's towing is located. So if this were, you know, a few feet to the left, and, you know, in the public right-of-way, we would actually be, be before the Board of Selectmen. So you'd set up a system where you're looking to get a special permit for this small cell facility, but it's a much less robust process, I would say. The FCC issued an order in 2018, you know, this is the next wave, this is what the carriers and the FCC and the US government want to see happen quickly. And that's why you have, you know, a lesser, a lesser, you know, or a process that doesn't involve a situation like we're putting up 150-foot monopole somewhere.
Right. So, so I guess the question is, we, we took a lot of time and effort to put a, an overlay together, and that was for the cell towers themselves. So each one of them, they, there are zoned areas in the overlay where you can place them. This doesn't have to comply with the overlay?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure, and this is more, I'm really trying to gather some information in my head to figure this out. How does it, how does it, how, when the overlay is in place and it applies to cell towers, how does that not apply to this? Or is it, has that been determined? Or is it, are you just going under the assumption that it doesn't? Or is there a determine, has there been a determination that these do not have to comply with the overlay zones for cell towers?
Yeah, two, two things there. So the ones in the right, the ones that are in the right-of-way are in the right-of-way, so they're not, you know, within a zoning district per se in Massachusetts. So that's why the Board of Selectmen has those, and they go through what I'd refer to as a grant of location, but, you know, Burlington has actually created an application process. For sites that are not in the public right-of-way, you have a new zoning bylaw which addresses those, and that's what we dealt with in making this application. So it's not a situation where it's a special permit for a cell tower in one of the overlay districts. We apply pursuant to Section 8.5.8, which addresses small cells specifically, small cells outside of public right-of-ways.
Right, right. Okay. And so that's, and your intention is really ultimately, these will be, if you had your preference, these would be within, you say, a quarter of a mile of each other? That's kind of how you effectively get the best coverage with, when these are, you know, given, I know there's other factors that come into play with, you know, trees between them and buildings between them and things like that. But let's say there isn't anything like that. Your, your ideal coverage would be that these all fall within a quarter of a mile of each other? Is that...
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think any of the carriers could afford to put these every quarter mile. I was talking about the coverage footprint that we would anticipate. But, you know, they're a lot closer than the macro sites, whether they would end up being a half a mile apart. I think it depends a lot on traffic. When I say traffic, network traffic. So, you know, out, out in a cul-de-sac somewhere, I don't think we're gonna, you know, in residential development, I don't think you're gonna see a small cell facility every quarter mile. But in a high, you know, in a dense area such as maybe around the Burlington Mall, I bet you're gonna see more.
Yep, okay. Okay. That's, that's it. So now, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I'm gonna actually see if Brenda can, can jump in here. I know you have some expertise here that some other board members may not have. Brenda, would you be able to make some comments and ask some questions for us here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually, do we have a copy of the structural report for this pole? Do we have that available?
You should. If you have the application, you should have it.
Okay. I'm wondering, at what height is that equipment cabinet? Because that's not called out. I feel like that's a little low for being in a public area.
Yeah, could we, I don't know who's controlling the screen, but if you could, could somebody go to our elevation plan? If, if you have it online?
No, I can do that.
Thank you. Sheet A1, if that helps.
I got it right here.
I had to respond, it's 11, 11 feet six inches high.
I think that's too low. I'd want to see that higher if this was approved. I'd also like to see a map of AT&amp;T's singular site, the macro sites versus the proposed small cell. And in doing so, you know, to give you a bit of a background, I managed Verizon's, Verizon Wireless' real estate portfolio for several, several years, as well as Sprint. So I do know that there is a fair amount of sites out there that have inactive equipment, and it's just kind of sitting there stale. So that's something that I'd want AT&amp;T to take a look at and, and potentially clean up. Did you...
Not to interrupt, but I'm just trying to take, so what, what, can I ask what the issue is on the height of the equipment cabinet?
At 11 feet on a quasi-public way, even though it's a private way, 11 feet's not really, I'd want it higher because of a safety issue.
And what, and that safety issue would be? I'm not trying to be difficult, I have to explain to a client what we're trying to do, and we have to deal with this with EverSource.
Is there gonna be copper in this pole?
Yes.
Yes, and that's the issue. Yes, and that's the issue. So, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, in this day and age, and again, being in the telecom industry for many, many years, uh, there's, there has been several situations where, um, you know, people steal the copper and then try to sell it. Um, and being at eleven feet, that's a cause for concern for, you know, again, for safety. I'd want that higher.
Well, that's it.
Okay, so, um, and then also, you had mentioned that there was, uh, if I heard you correctly, that there was an emissions test conducted?
No, there's an emissions report that we submitted.
Okay, um, I'd wanna take a look at that, uh, a little bit further. Um, and then additionally.
Can I go back, can I just go, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm just trying to, you mentioned it, equipment that you wanted AT&amp;T to look at, equipment that's not being used.
Well, they, I'd wanna see what, uh, what sites are, what macro sites, uh, AT&amp;T and Singular have in this, you know, in this area. Um, in my experience, there has been several macro sites or several tower sites that, um, don't actually have active equipment, but just have, you know, stale equipment lying around. We'd wanna make sure that that stuff is cleaned up.
Yep, you do have, and we also supplied a report from our radio frequency engineer with propagation maps, so you can see where we're generating signal, that's, it's definitely part of your package. I, I don't know if you, if you can see it, but you have it.
I think there's, there's two components, where the signal is actually being generated and actually the equipment that is still there. So if you did an inventory on the equipment at each of these sites, you know, I'd wanna see, is there excess equipment that's inactive at these sites? Have you done?
Is that related to this? And that's related to this site?
No, it's just, it's, I'm just saying in general, you know, AT&amp;T's coming in front of us and, you know, it's something that we may wanna look at. Um, and then my last question is, um, is Ed's towing receiving any compensation for, uh, the small cell site at, uh, on his property?
The property owner, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I didn't, uh, he is rece- he did receive, if you look at his letter of authorization, there's a spot that was redacted out, so there is a compensation component to the property owner, uh, but we do pay, we pay EverSource fees for the pole.
So Ed's towing is also receiving compensation as well as ever for it?
I got, if you look at the letter, you'll see that we blacked out what he's being compensated, yes.
I just wanted to call that out, thank you very much, nothing else, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, Mr. Clerk Raymond, do you have any questions or comments on this?
Uh, yes, uh, when Joe, uh, was asking his questions, uh, we have a number of daycares down in that area and so forth. And we have even on Adams Street a school, you know, where people go and learn math and that kind of thing. So there are a number of locations where the young people, so that would be my concern because, you know, these things all emit some kind of signal, uh, one way or another, and I would just want to be sure, because Joe asked the distance and so forth, uh, uh, that, that, uh, uh, we're, we're safe and, and don't have any concern as far as that's concerned. And, you know, this kind of, in, in the, I'm looking at this at Bcat, uh, in the previous picture, it was kind of a weird-looking pole that, that, in, in that picture in any rate. And, uh, so we're gonna see these springing up all over the place, down in that area. And I, I realize that's a commercial area, I mean, we made it that, so we have to have a certain sensitivity to what they need, you know, to be competitive and, and to do their business. So if it's, you know, benign, uh, a little pole like that down there with everything else really doesn't, you know, doesn't concern me. But that's, I'll just say that for now, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I noticed the sa- I, I noticed the same thing on the pole, it looks like there's a, there was a tremendous amount of growth.
Sorry, who's speaking?
Uh, I'm sorry, Ed Perry again from the applicant.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm just responding to the, to the board member's question. Uh, so there is, there is growth on the pole, and I looked at it today on Google Earth, you know, there's significant growth on it. So that pole's gonna be replaced and, you know, that will be cleaned up. Uh, you know, I don't know if there are a lot more going into this area, uh, only that there are small cell sites that will be coming to Burlington, and, you know, I know that around the Burlington Mall, there are significant capacity issues, so I'd expect somebody's gonna see those. If they're in the right-of-way, as I said, it would be the Board of Selectmen, and if they're not in the right-of-way, it'll, it would be for the planning board. Um, other than that, I hope I addressed whatever your comments and questions were.
Ma'am Chair, if I could just ask one other thing, is there a place where one of these is located that we can see it locally? Or is this the first one?
Well, it's the first one in Burlington, but I can certainly, um, as we go through the questions, I'll see, I, we typically send a, I could send you photographs of, you know, actually installed installations that would be similar to this, I'm sorry, similar to this, uh, similar, so it's, uh, and I understood, uh, from Kristen that, you know, we're not gonna be closing out this evening, so we will get, uh, I can get those photos over to you if we didn't already supply them. I, I did, I did not respond to one of your issues, though. And I would ask you to take a look at our RF emissions report, and likewise, you should, you know, anyone listening should go on to the FCC.gov webpage, and, you know, if, if they wanna find out more about emissions, they don't have to take my word for it, you can, there's lots of educational and technical information, and a lot of it's just very readable. I'm not an engineer, um, and I go on the webpage from time to time, you know, to get information and, uh, and to be comfortable. I could tell you that if, when you look at our emissions report, if you're more than twenty-five feet away from the antenna, you're, the emissions, so you'd experience a less than one percent of the maximum. So, you know, I don't know if there's a daycare or a school you were talking about that's half a mile away, but it would be, uh, negligible if at all, and certainly comply with the FCC standards, which is what we have to do.
Thank you for that.
There's actually a school on that same property, I think.
I believe so as well. Uh, Madam Chair, I just have one more question for Attorney Perry.
Of course.
Uh, Attorney Perry, um, if this pole was at the edge of your lawn, would you be okay with it?
I'm sorry, did you hear that?
If this pole was at the edge of your lawn, would you be okay with it?
Yes, I would, I have no issue with it.
Interesting, thank you.
If you were in the, if you were in the, if you were in the industry, I'm sure you wouldn't either.
No, I wouldn't, actually, that's the difference.
She is in the industry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Um, all right, um, Ernie Covino, did you have any questions or comments?
Uh, uh, yes, a few, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, can you tell me, there's, there's a, a pole existing at this location, you're going to replace it with another pole? Will that, uh, new pole be the same height, uh, as the existing pole?
The new pole is, the new pole is thirty-four, I did a good start of my plan, and the existing pole is on here, hang on. Yeah, hang on one second, I'm just gonna look at my plan here without cutting off the screen.
Okay.
Uh, the top of the existing pole is thirty feet six inches, and the new pole is thirty-four feet.
Okay, does a thirty-four feet include the, what is it, twenty-four inches for the new antenna?
It does not, the antenna will be at a top height of thirty-seven feet. So we have an existing pole, thirty feet six inches, proposed pole is thirty-four feet, top of the antenna, thirty-seven feet.
Thirty-seven.
I know the plan's not quite clear, but that's, uh, on the screen anyway, but, uh,
Okay.
It's on the plan.
Thank you. I, I haven't had an opportunity to review your, uh, emissions report, but off the top of your head, can you tell me, uh, what would be the maximum available power in wattage of the equipment that's gonna be mounted there? And what frequency would it be operating on?
Uh, the frequencies are in the report, so there are a number of them, uh, depending on whether it's LTE or, uh, 3G. Um, is the, I have a list handy.
Uh, just, you don't have to read them all, just the bottom and top frequencies, fine.
Yep, eight fifty and nineteen hundred megahertz, and then on the LTE, it's seven hundred, eight fifty, nineteen hundred, twenty-one hundred, and twenty-three hundred.
So twenty-three hundred would be the highest frequency available for the equipment that's gonna be there, right?
Correct, so this, so this equipment, yes.
Okay, and?
As far as the, as far as the power, I'd have to look it up in the report, but it would be there.
All right, uh, because I know sometimes emission reports only identify, uh, the amount of power that you expect to be transmitting, even though the equipment might be capable of producing higher power. And I'd be interested in knowing what the highest power of the equipment that will be mounted there, capable of producing.
When we, when we, when we submit our emissions report, you'll see it's anticipated or assumed full power of all antennas operating. So it's a worst-case scenario, uh, but again, I would refer you to the report and, uh, you know, if there are further follow-up questions, we'll be sure to address them, but it's, it's assuming everything's operating at full power all the time.
At full available equipment power, is what you're, is that what you're saying?
I, it's at full power, I don't know, and full available equipment power is different, but I, I suggest you take a look at the report, and I'll get you more information if need be.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, when we initially got involved in this, uh, actually Brenda and I were on a, a committee, or, or attended committee meetings that Selectmen had, uh, put together when 5G, uh, the notion of 5G became, uh, prevalent. And, and at that time, we were, we were told, and I guess, uh, it sounds like we were misinformed, that antennas could be as much as a hundred to two hundred feet apart. Now you're saying roughly a quarter of a mile in, in your knowledge, is that correct, or, or do we?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, you know, now we're going to two different topics, so you, you mentioned 5G. Now, 5G, if, you know, to use a pure 5G that is in the millimeter waves frequency band, so that, and that, uh, is much less, uh, as far as the footprint, and that, I've heard estimates between one hundred and three hundred feet. So I think that's where you may be getting, uh, that information. This is a 3G slash 4G, there are no millimeter waves, uh, antennas on this particular installation, but yet, when the millimeter wave, you know, pure 5G begins getting deployed, you know, they are looking at between a hundred and three hundred feet.
Okay, uh, so, okay, so I, I understand the difference now. So if this, if this site, or if this pole was to be converted to 5G or millimeter wave, as you're calling it, uh, as it is, uh, would you be required to come back to us for a different permit? In other words, this permit is only for the equipment that you have, uh, said is going to be operating here. If you change the equipment, you would need another permit, is that correct?
Well, it, I'll tell you, we'd need more, we'd need different antennas, because these antennas are not millimeter wave antennas. Whether the Board has jurisdiction over those is, you know, sort of a hypothetical discussion for the future, but, you know, you say, do we have to come back to you, we may have to get additional permits? We get those from, you know, maybe subject to some debate, but, you know, this, if, if we were to, you know, convert this to a millimeter wave, uh, scenario, we would have to add antennas to the installation, and they would likely be at a lower height than the top of the pole.
Right, and the millimeter wave antennas are actually shorter antennas than these, so uh, there, we might not notice any physical difference, is what I mean, and, and, Mike, not concerned, go ahead, Ed.
If, if, if we were to put millimeter wave antennas on this pole, you would notice a difference. They're not, they're not, they're not large, but they're not necessarily smaller.
Okay, so you.
I'm sorry.
Good.
I just, just a quick question, Attorney, um, are you actually leasing the entire pole? Or are you leasing a section of the pole? So, you know, just, just for other, uh, folks that aren't familiar with the industry, you know, um, tower companies, and not specifically AT&amp;T, because they're more focused on their network as opposed to others, but tower companies such as, like, American Tower, they view these poles comparable to an apartment complex where they lease out several, um, levels of frequen- or several levels of the pole to add other carriers. Is, are, are you leasing the entire pole, or are you just leasing the top of the pole?
Yeah, we don't, we don't actually lease, lease any of the pole. They grant us a license, just like the wires that are hanging off the pole are granted, if, you know, cable company were attached. Uh, at least as of right now, EverSource and National Grid, the two main, you know, providers in, uh, Massachusetts and Rhode Island that I deal with, will not allow a second attachment to a pole. So when you ask, are we exclusives? No, because we don't control the pole, we just license what you see here. And in fact, the license we submitted has the equipment, you know, that, you know, we have depicted on the plans. Uh, but, you know, from a practical standpoint, nobody else is gonna attach to this pole.
Thank you, sorry, Member Covino, I just wanna make sure.
Thanks, thanks, Brenda, that, that actually was my other question about co-locating. And I guess co-locating is, is at the discretion of the, uh, the pole owner rather than, as, as, as different from towers. Uh, that's all, all the questions I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so just to, just to follow up on Brenda, is there, there is no exclusivity within your agreement?
I'm sorry, well, I, I didn't.
So you, you're like, there's no exclusivity, uh, components to your agreement on that pole?
There are not, uh, so it's really up to the utility companies, so long as they don't interfere with us or interfere with any of the other attachers that are there, you know, first in time. Uh, as I said, I, I can only tell you what the utility companies are telling us, is that, you know, it's one, one small cell facility per pole, period. Whether that changes at some point, uh, you know, is a whole nother issue. I, I don't think they necessarily see this as, um, you know, something that, their, their primary purpose, that pole's to provide electricity, I guess, from Verizon's standpoint, uh, telephone, uh, but the cable and wireless companies can attach to the poles, you know, pursuant to federal and state law at this point.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, um, let's move on. Um, Mike Espo, would you like to chime in?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, thank you, Attorney Perry, for joining us tonight and making the presentation, um, appreciate it. I got a couple of questions, and forgive me if you touched on this, I'm just still trying to wrap my head around a lot of this. What determines where these poles or, or, uh, I guess, units are, are placed? Do you have, like, testing that your clients do that go around to determine where they go? Or what, what actually says, hey, we want one here?
Yep, that's a great question. So, yeah, yeah, I, I guess you have to think about, you know, what AT&amp;T and what these wireless carriers do, they provide a network. So they consider, you know, the network is online, it's monitored twenty-four seven, so they can see, you know, what's taking place. They can see if, you know, calls are, uh, I use the word call, so I'm not sure that's, you know, really appropriate, connections are, you know, being maintained at, at the speed that customers are looking for, something is designing their network too. So they, they know where the weak spots are, they know where they need additional, you know, like I said, in this case, capacity. Sometimes they need additional coverage. Um, so, you know, they'll, they'll send out a site acquisition agent and tell them, we need something, say, within this area. And like I said, with these small cell facilities, we tend to look for existing light poles, existing utility poles, something that is already there, so we're not introducing new structures into either the public right-of-way or, you know, into the municipality. But it's, it's pretty finite, as I said, you know, the coverage footprint is probably a quarter mile, so would be, you know, the RF engineer wants something within probably a quarter mile of this location.
You should have them check.
You know, this is, this is, this, this is an existing pole, uh, you know, which is good. And the other thing is, we don't, it doesn't have, uh, you know, transformers on it, which we can't attach. You know, when we have transformers, um, if there are lots of wires on the pole and it's very busy, we can't, you know, the utility company won't let us attach. In this instance, we just have some sec- uh, secondary wire, secondary power wires to the pole. In this instance, we just have some secondary wire, secondary power wires to the pole. Otherwise, from our perspective, it's a pretty clean pole.
So isn't, there isn't really like a planned, like, coverage plan to kind of look around an area to see, you know, or like incremental testing of an area to see where needs may arise or where they, they come in future. And where you're, where I'm going with this is, this is obviously, as has been mentioned, our first one here in town. Do you anticipate these, I mean, how many of these things are we going to be seeing? Do you anticipate, you know, these things popping up? Are we going to have one every meeting now? Do you see them popping up all over the place? Should I, you know, should I really brush up on this stuff and become an expert? I mean, so I get used to, I mean, just curious on what you see in the future for Burlington? And how many of these poles are we going to be seeing?
Yeah, you're gonna, I, you are going to see activity over by the mall. As I alluded to, you have bifurcated the small cell review process. Sites that are in the public right of way and sites that are not within the public right of way. You know, unless something changes, this planning board is only going to see small cell facilities in, on, outside of the public rights of way. I think that's going to be the exception and not the rule. I think generally AT&amp;T certainly and, you know, from what I just see in the business and being a hearing, they're generally installed in the public right of ways. As I said, if this pole were over a little bit further, you know, would be in front of the selected and not the planning board. So I don't think, again, who, you know, who knows for sure, but you know, my sense is that this planning board is not going to see a lot of these sites. They're much preferred to be in the public right of way, which is where, and the select will deal with us.
Okay. And to dovetail on what, uh, Member Raymond asked, if there aren't any here in town, are there any nearby, where in adjoining towns where we could go and take a look? If you get that info to staff, I mean, we love Burlington, but we're not against crossing town lines to go and take a look. They're very, very important and I think we should all kind of familiar, familiarize ourselves as much as maybe Brenda and to what we're dealing with here. So we all have more, more comfortable level of discussion and knowledge on these things. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I mean, it's not often, but I'll venture into Uber if need be. I'd make an exception. So if you let us know, that'd be great. And that's all I had, ma'am, sure. Thank you.
I will, I, what I'll do is, well, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll supply the staff by the, or in the planning department, we'll let them know. We'll get you some locations of some sites that are, you know, out there and on air so you can take a ride by and see what they look like. Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Gaffney, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think there's a lot of good questions from the board members on this. And I myself haven't taken a look at the, the, or any of the data, but I will. So I'm going to kind of go a different length than I normally go is with the aesthetics of this. And, and as I look at the same pole that the attorney showed, that it does have some growth on it. And then I tried to figure out where the power lines go to from that pole. So it, and then at their, their, their secondary power line, so they're not power lines going somewhere. The power lines are actually coming into that pole as far as I can tell. And they, they don't go anywhere. It could be a, a pole left over from whatever was on the existing site many years ago. So with the power lines coming into that pole, the pole really doesn't need to be there. So, and if I think of that, then it doesn't make sense to put, you know, some things here that we see. There's going to be a lot of apparatus on this pole where you don't necessarily need that with an extra pole there. So I, I'm kind of thinking a little bit differently here as I go down those external pipe and fairly close to that. There is a, there is a light down on the other side of Ned's that you could put this on where it's going to be less intrusive looking. So if you put the boxes and the antenna on that, that light, you could call them the same. It would blend in a bit. Versus in this particular rendering, we're going to look at some that the attorney is going to provide for us real time. I believe based on my research, there's a lot of issues with the guy to the stakes of this where you're putting hardware on poles. And it looks like a lot of hardware on poles, which you try to get away from historically by putting power lines and telephone poles underground. That's the whole intent of that. So we're kind of going backwards. So I would recommend, again, maybe using this, the, the light that's over heading south on those external pipe, just a few feet away. Again, it's a black, very well done. You could put it right on there and probably hide it very well. Or if you go down just into the parking lot of Bed Bath and Beyond, there are some, some parking lot lights there. You could put it on and again, kind of color it light, white color the same as the pole, the light pole there and existing pole. And then you'd have existing poles that actually are attractive looking and add the equipment onto that versus one that's standing there by itself. Currently having IV on it, it doesn't look like it's doing anything and not necessarily kind of but put a, an unattractive pole and add to that. If they're going to take that pole down, again, for no reason, there's, there's nothing going from that pole to somewhere for the pole to be there. You don't necessarily want to add an extra pole that has nothing except for this on it, I would, I would argue. If, if we decide, you know, that, that those other two locations don't work for a reason, that again, they're probably within 30 feet of each other. Then maybe I can, I can ask Member Rapaput, is there a way for the pole to encompass the hardware versus it being hung on the side? And make it more attractive? Because if we're going to go down this road and use it as a benchmark for further activity on this, then we want to not have them hanging off of existing poles and really incorporating them such that you can't see them. For example, I think they have in California, there, there's metering there that you can do from a, a, a transmission standpoint versus having an actual meter on the pole that you can read. So, you know, maybe there's some transceiver activity there where you don't need that, that, that big box on the side of it where you can kind of get that reduced. So kind of some best, best in class activity here versus it just being on a, a lone pole sitting there. Ned's, as everyone knows about Ned's, we, you know, we want to start to, you know, make that look much better. As you go down the middle six turnpike, adding a pole with hardware on it's probably not where you want to go with that. We can consider other poles very close to that, that I think you can just add on to that because there's existing hardware on it and it will buffer what you, you visually seeing there.
Member Gaffney, there is the possibility to stealth any type of small cell or stealth site equipment. It is definitely something that is more expensive for the carrier and is typically not very well received. You know, I, I don't know exactly where Ned's towing is in their agreement with the carrier. But you know, I, it's my understanding that we don't necessarily have too much pushback if they're in a public way. But if they're in a private way, we have a little bit more autonomy to, to offer our opinion, which is of course why we're here today. So yes, can they sell it? Of course. If Ed, is it Ed or Ned's towing? You know, any, any private owner that is approached could also require that to be done. Again, the selling, whether it looked like a flagpole or a pine tree or whatever type of selling that, that we could do. That is definitely an option.
So maybe the question I would have on who's the applicant to say, so currently the power on that pole, where does that go to today? Not where it comes in from. We understand that some wires. Where's that power go to for that pole? Why is that pole there?
Yeah, Andre.
Seems like an extra pole.
Our engineers, our engineers on, I don't know if he knows or not. I did look on Google Earth. I didn't see it leaving the pole either. So, Andre, do we have any idea where the power goes after it comes into the pole? If we know, fine. If not, we'll get the answer.
Hello, my name is Andreas Zikonovsky. I'm with Hudson Design Group. We walked the site and we identified the existing lines there. There are power lines on the pole as well as fiber and telephone cables. They're all going somewhere. Then they don't, they don't just terminate at the pole. We don't have exact origin and termination points of the existing cables on the pole. We just have the elevations that they're on the pole for the purpose of us depicting the monoplane and coordinating with the power company. The setbacks that we need to be away from those cables to meet the code requirements.
Yeah, I should, I should probably point out, we don't own this pole. We're not putting in the pole. This is a utility pole. So, you know, whether it gets removed or not is, you know, strictly up to the utility company. They have an easement, I assume, with the property owner to have the pole there. And if it's going to remain in use, then it makes sense to use it. I am not aware of any electrical metering that's done remotely, at least in Massachusetts or Rhode Island and New England, frankly. That meter is put there, you know, as required by Eversource. You know, so it's, it's certainly not for us. We're going to use electricity. They're going to meter it. We don't have a choice.
Okay. Then, thank you, Madam Chair.
Barbara, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. What I was saying is I have a lot more reading and a lot more learning to do about this, but I think my fellow board members have brought up some very important points. I, I can't speak to the technology at this time, but one thing I, I do think is really important for us all to remember is that this is a first. And therefore we're setting a precedent. So we do need to do it right. And I think now is the time for us to set the standard and it should be set very high because everything that follows is going to have to live up to that same standard. So I, I like the idea of selling and I think it's something we should probably look into. And then again, I, I need to do a lot more research so I better understand. But I appreciate all of the really valuable input from my fellow board members. At this time, I want to.
Could I make one more comment, Madam Chair? Just a, a member Gaffney, one thing you asked about how these prices are selected, I think. If you take a look at the materials that we submitted, we did submit coverage maps and you'll see exactly how the AT&amp;T network looks and how we'll look after. So, you know, in between meetings here, I mean, feel free to, you know, delve in a little bit. And so you can see where our coverage is coming from, what AT&amp;T is looking to do and what this site gives it. You'll see, you know, the footprints of each of these locations, the macro sites and the small cell sites.
Sure. And note the, the ones, the, and if you want to put on a Google map, you can see where the other poles that I talked about are within probably 30 feet of that site. So we'll, we'll take a look at that and consider kind of extra options. And again, to the, to the pole being there, if it goes nowhere and anything's not there, when that site gets redeveloped at some point, then the conversation will be if that pole has no use, then the pole will be removed. So it kind of is, is where planners were planning ahead and to say, okay, if that, if that pole's not being used today and we redevelop that site, then the only reason why that pole is there in the future, you redid the pole is because it's a small cell. It was an opportunity to do very close on other poles. Then that kind of prohibits and limits what you can use on that site in the future. And again, trying to get rid of extra poles as we, as we think a little bit further down the road is, is, as planners, right?
Yep. I agree. And I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's possible at some point that, you know, things go underground utility wise. But, you know, we're kind of like the cable company attaching. So, you know, if there's telephone wires or electrical wires or cable wires, then, you know, if, if a site gets redeveloped and a pole comes down, then, you know, solutions are come up with. So that's why we don't have a lease. We don't own the pole. That's why they only give us a license, just like they do the cable company. So if at some point it gets redeveloped and the cable company has to move, we're going to have to move also.
So maybe I've just talked to the staff about what, what are our options here? So if, if, if there are, if there are alternatives close by within their coverage, can we, can we recommend that versus the, the one that they, the single one that they picked out? What's our, what's our options on that?
Bill, if I could chime in for just a minute, I think because we're not going to vote on this tonight, I think we should, that's an important question that we should research. But I really want to get to some of the listening audience members who have been waiting. So if we could sort of put a pin on that and research it for the next meeting, I think that would be helpful. Is that okay with you?
So pinned.
Thank you. Okay. So now I'd like to open this up to the listening members who are listening online that would like to chime in. Please identify yourself and we will call each of you to speak. I see Ruth raising her hand. Ruth, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Ruth Rinn. I live in Burlington. I've written up a one-page statement giving an overview of what's happening in other towns in Massachusetts and across the country and even in the world. And I hope you'll give me a chance to read the entire statement. It shouldn't take long. So, thank you. Wireless communication received FCC approval in 1998 with no valid safety testing. In 2018, the U.S. National Toxicology Board $30 million study concludes, quote, "clear evidence, the strongest warning on their scale that wireless technology causes cancer and DNA mutation, industry spin notwithstanding." Additional peer-reviewed studies link wireless radiation to infertility, autism, Alzheimer's, insomnia, headaches, nosebleeds, cognitive impairment, anxiety, depression, and more. Research shows that children, fetuses, the elderly, and those with existing health conditions are especially vulnerable. People in Boston have reported heart palpitations and vice grip headaches in proximity to 5G cells. Renowned scientists worldwide have documented hazards and issued warnings about 5G. Among them, Dr. David Carpenter, former director of New York State Department of Health, Frank Clegg, C L E G G, former president of Microsoft Canada. Many other scientists are featured in the documentary Generation Zapped, Z A P P E D, which is accessible online and highly recommended that you all watch it, one hour documentary. There has been pushback to 5G worldwide, including in the U.S. The city of Boston is suing the FCC for local control and has filed a formal comment asserting that the radiation exposure limits set by the FCC do not protect public health. New Hampshire and Oregon have passed laws suspending installation pending study. The Big Island of Hawaii, as well as Eastern Connecticut, Keene, New Hampshire, Berkeley, California, and many others have also issued temporary moratoriums. In other countries, 5G is on hold in Belgium, Cyprus, Israel, Bermuda, and others. In Massachusetts, Shelbourne, the town of Shelbourne, has, has ordered a 1,500-foot setback in their bylaws. The National Library of France has banned Wi-Fi citing health concerns. 5G uses short millimeter waves, as had been alluded to, which cannot go through objects. The telecom industry's goal is to install millions of small cells at the curb outside homes and public access way every two to 12 houses. We may all be faced with antennas right outside our and our children's bedroom windows, causing serious harm to our health. Studies show that some children are already suffering nosebleeds, nausea, and headaches in schools when exposed to Wi-Fi. If more antennas are installed right outside our homes, that would mean 24/7 exposure to toxicity. In addition, property values go down when small cells are nearby. From a technical perspective, several articles in PC Magazine, Computer World, and Washington Post report that despite industry claims, 5G is not as fast as advertised. And finally, in light of significant health risks that the wireless industry would wreak on our town by installing their toxic infrastructure, it would behoove Burlington to at least delay installation for as long as possible. And I can follow this up with an email with links to very reliable websites. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Who is, who else would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Ms. Russo, welcome.
Hello.
Go ahead. Yes, you're right.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank the members too for your time tonight. I have a couple of questions. So when we started the 5G and worked on the bylaw. So when we started the 5G and worked on the bylaw, the selectmen put aside money for an independent RF engineer to review when these come through. Has that happened with this application yet?
Kristin, do you know?
Yes, Madam Chair, I can answer that question.
Thank you.
So I have discussed with the consultant, we will be making a motion for a peer-review consultant and dollars associated with that to review this application and help us through just a very new and very complicated set of regulations, being local, state, federal. And as Joe mentioned, slightly different than the traditional wireless type of regulations that we've gone by in the past. So as well as dealing with all of the concealment and other authorities that we have. So yes, we are moving down that path, and you'll see that the board will make the motion for a consultant to begin work ASAP after this meeting. Because as you know, there is a timeline that we need to meet, and we need to be really, within the next six weeks, be moving quickly to figure out what this is and make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to get what's best for Burlington. So, yes, no, we are moving forward in that vein, and we should be getting on board very quickly. And I think we talked today that he might be joining us, kind of fly on the wall, he might be here, but I'd said certainly not till next meeting. So that's why I mentioned this meeting. We want to really make a list of a lot of questions. A lot of people asked wonderful questions, we also have some questions. And so, anyway, yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. And with regard to the RF engineer, if I can just, so it's in the comment or it's recorded. You know, the RF engineer, the first page from Donald Hayes talks about using cylindrical model. In the past, the wireless companies have come through Burlington, some of them, not all, some have tweaked the models, turned off antennas, made their gaps look bigger. It was through the RF engineers' peer review. So I'd like to, if they could comment with regard to the model that AT&amp;T used, if it's appropriate, if it's like a model that makes things exaggerated more of a gap than needs to be. And then with regard to RF engineer, if, you know, we're looking, these companies before us, they have their business plan, they have their business plan for what they can get the most coverage for the cheapest cost. And I think there was a board member that alluded to that, or two board members. A planning board, you see this all the time with companies, not just the wireless. So again, what constitutes as a gap here? I keep seeing in these 82 pages, there's a gap, there's a significant gap, there's a gap. But we, as a town, are only, we cannot, what was the word? Sorry, we can effectively prohibit from providing adequate coverage. That's a law, adequate coverage. Not 100%, not 150% coverage, adequate. So if, when the RF engineer reviews this, if they can, just so I don't keep asking the same question, if, you know, that is an area that they could explain as a peer-independent review and not as an industry's review of what adequate is. And then I have another question regarding buildings, and this is kind of confusing me because the first page, and then in section 5, 4, section 1 on the other RF engineers' program, they talk about there are no buildings. There's no buildings that would provide a location. And so far, I've only heard about poles. Why can't we use a building? But did you look at buildings? Sorry, through the chair. Did AT&amp;T look at putting this on a building?
May I answer?
Sorry, I was unmuted. We did not look at buildings. We did not look at buildings. Buildings are further away from the street, which is what we're trying to get closer to people. And we had an existing utility pole that we could utilize. As I said, that's the first choice, not only for AT&amp;T, but I think you'll see in the future for all of the carriers, it's existing infrastructure and not adding anything. When we get on the roof of the building, as I said, the antenna is very low-power, so the signal isn't like a macro site where it propagates well off the building. If we move onto the roof of the building, we're going to lose coverage. Again, I would suggest that you take a look at our coverage maps with respect to what AT&amp;T is trying to resolve as far as coverage and capacity. And just to be clear, coverage is not the only test for effective prohibition. The FCC has made other determinations at this point, which I write up in my cover letter to the board under the Federal Telecommunications Act. It's materially inhibited, and that includes a cost factor. As we're deploying this coverage, the cost of one site as it continues to waterfall takes away from other sites and other communities, so that you don't get the same high-speed coverage that you would get. There are only so many capital dollars out there to spend, and sites are too expensive, they don't get built, or they can't be absorbed, then the carriers go elsewhere. I mean, it's pure economics. So, of course, the FCC is determining that cost is a factor when they test for compliance with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and the standard is whether we are materially inhibited from providing coverage, capacity, or any type of coverage that they're licensed for. Of course, cost is a factor, that can't be ignored or discounted.
Typically, a private landowner versus a building owner is going to be a lot cheaper.
I'm sorry, what was that, a private?
I said typically, like an owner, a small business owner, as opposed to a large building owner, is going to be a lot cheaper to lease the space on their property as opposed to, you know, a large, you know, building owner.
All right, I would agree. And that's why you'll see most of these go into the public right-of-way, because they're much cheaper in the right-of-way. Much, much cheaper.
Agreed, which, you know, from my perspective, I guess, I would highly recommend those business owners who are approached to request a stealthing or request a more aesthetically appealing situation as opposed to, you know, just accepting a check and moving on.
Well, as I said, we're dealing with a utility company, we're not dealing with a property owner. We've got his consent to go onto the...
I think we already cleared that up, you're also compensating Ed showing.
For consent, for consent.
Okay, I want to get back to the listening audience now, sir. So is there anyone else who would like to comment or ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Russo, you were not done. Please go ahead.
That's okay. So in this report, it says, "coverage by Philly MA is the existing gap." We have many areas where you claim that you were looking at buildings. So I'm not sure why you said you were looking at buildings when clearly that doesn't seem to be the case here. With regard to the map, Madam Chair, can I, I think it's like the color coding that I might not be understanding. Mr. Parr, so the first three maps, I don't know if you have them in front of you or who I should be directing.
You can, yes, raise your hand, I think.
I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. That first map there that's being shown to us right now, there are, are you looking at the circled, it says, "proposed locations circled red." But we just have one before the board tonight, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
So I'm...
Sorry, I'm muted again. So you're looking at the little red circle to the, at the bottom of the paper.
Okay, but this says proposed locations.
Right, so this is part...
Yeah, sorry.
So this is part of AT&amp;T's plan. As I said, you're going to see facilities coming through at the mall or in the mall area. So these are areas that AT&amp;T has some interest in. Whether they proceed or not is another question, but this is what the layout would look like for this area in southern Burlington. But the location that we're talking about is exactly where, that's my, yeah, exactly where the arrows are right now.
Okay, so, but, so we are looking at those five ultimately.
Well, we're not, well, right now, the planning board has one in front of it because they're not going to see the other ones. They don't have jurisdiction over the ones in the public right-of-way.
Oh, I see. So we can plan on seeing those at the selectmen's meeting?
You may at some point, yes.
Okay.
I don't know that it'll be, it'll be all of them, but I'm pretty confident you'll see some of them.
Okay, so that kind of clears up my confusion on that one.
Okay.
And then, if you don't mind, if we go down to the maps that are red, green, and blue, that again, show the coverage part, and I guess this is more for the RF engineer is if he could, again, verify that these maps and this coverage, and again, do we have to have the green throughout all there? Or are we perfectly capable with the blue area? You know, you talked about that waterfall, we're seeing the waterfall of these antennas coming into our town and going to be all over there. So, you know, it's not our town's responsibility to give you, you know, to give AT&amp;T the cheapest way to get these antennas around. And that's what many business owners are faced with, those exact choices that you talked about. And then, so lastly, if you don't mind, Miss...
Well, if I can, so before you ask me a question, I see, yes, we are looking to get green in all of these areas, and that's the AT&amp;T network design. So that's what we're looking to do, is we flip through these pages.
And again, I just want to reiterate, is green what Burlington is required to do based on the independent RF engineer? You know, we had T-Mobile come across a couple of years ago. They were looking and put themselves on an apartment building in the middle of town, special permit. Meanwhile, the courthouse building, a Cummings property, was perfectly adequate, but they didn't want to go there because it was more expensive. And after the peer review, the independent peer review, they were denied for the apartment, and they were put on the Cummings property. And sometimes those properties are better because their property, the people that manage the property have more experience with this type of technology and, you know, can handle it better. So if you don't mind, Miss Chair, may I just make two statements in closing?
Of course, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just, I would just like to urge the board to hold off on approving these. I know you're not doing it tonight, but even as we approach that based on what we hear from the engineers, the industry is going to threaten to sue, that's what they do, but it doesn't mean they'll win. X10 just sued Cambridge and lost. If they do win on this case, they're going to win this one application. And we see they're coming back for other applications. You know, I urge the board to look at New Hampshire and Oregon, and the laws that are being tested there. I urge the board to keep abreast of the city of Boston's lawsuit and how that progresses. Member Gaffney, there are many very strong comments and very important comments by the members of this board, I appreciate. Gaffney used the words that this is a benchmark we're at right here. And we are looking at many more of these on that map that's being shown there. Four more that will be coming across, I'm sure, at some point. So if we lose out on this one permit, I think that knowledge and what we'll gain out of this might be well worth it. Again, the law says that we cannot effectively prohibit from providing adequate coverage, Burlington, in my mind, and we'll see what, you know, courts and our peer engineer review says. But AT&amp;T might just have adequate coverage without this. Their objective is for 100%, and regardless, it is for the least amount of cost as possible. And I think Ms. Raffaport highlighted that very well also. So it's not Burlington's responsibility, or literally our town, to meet this company's high objectives. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Russo. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Please identify yourself. Staff, are we seeing anyone?
Hello?
Hi, please speak up, sir, and tell us your name.
Sure, my name is Jim Perloff. I'm a resident of Burlington for some time now. Registered nurse for 45 years. And I have seen certainly firsthand evidence of damage from electromagnetic frequencies that took care of a young man who died at the age of 24, worked on the big dig, always held his cellphone right to his head here, and died of a brain tumor. If you may have noticed, Ted Kennedy always held his, right-handed, always held his cellphone right next to his head. He died of a tumor on the right side of his head. But John McCain, who was left-handed, he always had his cellphone on the left side of his head, and he died from brain tumors on the left side of his head. And there's no question that there is tremendous danger associated with electromagnetic frequencies. I think the chairwoman made a very important point tonight, which is that we're setting a precedent tonight. And something that Attorney Pierre mentioned concerned me. I know he said that the current tower being discussed has low power, but did you not also say that this can be converted to 5G later? And that you do not need to come back to the planning board for approval for that? Does that, I understand that correctly?
Shall I answer?
Yes.
Yes, please go ahead.
So, you know, 5G would be the lower power. So let me, let me just go over this, you know, power issue. We have, I mean, the more and closer sites are to the phone, the less power that the phone has to use, the less power that the site puts out, because connectivity can be maintained without increasing power. My comments about 5G are that if we switch to the millimeter wave or if we add the millimeter wave spectrum frequencies, we will have to use different antennas. The question becomes whether we have to come back to this board under state, federal, and local law for adding antennas to an existing structure. We may have to, it's possible we don't have to, but the bottom line is, we would need to add additional equipment to convert this to millimeter wave. I'll also say that in 2019, and I said earlier, you should, you know, folks who want to learn and get educated about this should go on the FCC's webpage, you know, not AT&amp;T's, go on the FCC's webpage. This is very straightforward information and materials, you know, that's produced by our government. In 2019 September, they affirmed their standards. So you'll find lots of information, and, you know, feel free to read it. You know, I'm a First Amendment, you know, kind of guy. I mean, people are talking about things that, you know, with respect to health, that, you know, as I said, we comply, and that's our one mandate that we have to comply. But everyone gets their say. I would encourage board members and members of the public to look at what the FCC has said.
I used to trust the government.
I'd like to respond to that on the FCC. Harvard University's better report, it's called Captured Agency, How the Federal Communications Commission Is Dominated by the Industries It Presumably Regulates. And I'd also like to read a statement pertinent to that. By Mr. Frank Clegg, the former president of Microsoft Canada, said, "In my career, I've seen the tremendous benefit that technology can provide," and me too. "I've also seen the potential harm if technology is not implemented correctly, and I believe that our current implementation of 5G technology is not safe." That's why I founded Canadians for Safe Technology. In fact, 231 scientists from 41 nations around the world formally written to the United Nations as member nations on the World Health Order. formally written to the United Nations as member nations and the World Health Organization for the planned rollout of 5G technology, especially for vulnerable populations like children, pregnant women, and the environmentally sensitive. Been joined by state legislatures and federal regulators who have the FCC for evidence that there's no harm from the rollout of 5G technology. 5G technology has not been tested. I'm not aware of a single study that shows 5G technology is safe. I just want to mention that there's a viral video, Senator Richard Blumenthal of Connecticut, speaking to representatives of the telecom industry, asking if any safety testing has ever been done on 5G, and they finally admitted not a single safety test has ever been done. And just in regard to the FCC, um, he says, um, "You may ask why a product with this potential harm could be released to the public, public use. Where the process works is the FCC regulates all wireless devices and products associated with them. Unfortunately, FCC is made up of former telecom executives, lawyers, and engineers, it does not have any doctors and scientists." I'm concerned about the health risks of this, and I'm concerned that we're maybe starting something here. And so my recommendation would be, if we approve this tower, that, uh, we, it, there'd be a limit, that it's, I think he said it was 3G right now, that if they, they want to advance it to 5G, that they get permission in order to do that, because I don't want to see, if, mind you, in a 5G, the, the towers have to be very close together. They'll, they'll start to go in neighborhoods, and maybe we're going to see, uh, a great increase in, uh, these illnesses, which Ruth Rin previously summarized, but I can tell you that there's tremendous number of scientific peer-reviewed studies showing they cause DNA damage, cancer, heart irregularities, and other problems. I don't want to see that proliferate from a bad step we make here. So I would put a restriction on this tower and say, if, if it goes to 5G, the telecom communicate, uh, industry has to come back and ask for permission.
Um, Mr. Perloff, this is Barbara LaRue. Um, thank you very much for your comments. Would you be, would it be possible for you to forward a couple of those articles that you just mentioned to our staff so that we can read them? You can just send to.
Okay.
Planning@burlington.org. And then, um, one last thing before I let you go. I understand you're Burlington resident. Could you give us your address just for our records?
It's twenty-five South Bedford Street.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, can you give me that email address again? I want to make sure I get it right.
Planning@burlington.org.
Okay.
And you look right in mind, Barhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for, for your input. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter?
May I ask another question?
Who is that?
Ruth Rin.
Oh, Ruth, yes, please go ahead.
This just came to my attention today. Northeastern University at Burlington is, um, through a, a program called Coliseum, is planning to install two hundred fifty-six small cells in the town of Burlington. Are you aware of this? They have a seminar tomorrow at noon, I can send you the link, in which they're going to discuss this. It's a two-hour, uh, session tomorrow from noon till two-thirty, I think. And, and the, uh, the notice that I received said that that's what they're planning, two hundred fifty-six small cells throughout Burlington.
Well, that just really drives to home the point that we need to, um, be very, very careful about what we're allowing here. This is a precedent that we're setting, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
I do want to see if there are any other people in the audience that have not, who have not yet had a chance to speak on this matter that want to speak now? Staff, are we seeing anyone?
I'm not seeing anyone else, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, um, as we stated, um, we are not planning to vote on this tonight, but we do, um, want to take a vote regarding consultant. And, um, before we move on to that, do any of my board members want to ask any questions since we have this additional input from our neighbors? Or do we want to move forward with a motion for the consultant?
Motion?
Motion.
Okay. Receive it.
Do you want a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to National Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three G, Employment of Outside Consultants. The Planning Board hereby instructs the planning staff to create a scope of work in contract not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars, to employ an outside consultant to aid in the review of small cell wireless, of the small cell wireless proposal at forty-nine Middlesex Turnpike. The applicant shall submit the funds within seven days of this vote to begin a review.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Chairman and Pema. Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and before the next motion, um, I do think it would be appropriate for us to appoint a subcommittee of at least two board members that can, um, take on, on this in, in some off-site meetings at the same time, so that we can learn a little bit more. I'm going to encourage everyone to attend those meetings, I'm going to try to attend them all as well, but I think it would be, I would have a subcommittee appointed. Are there any volunteers for that?
I would like to volunteer, Madam Chair, this is Ernie, and also, uh, Slackman Tiggs had his hand up. I don't know if you want to recognize him later.
I, I will, let's get the subcommittee appointed. So, Ernie, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'd be happy to join, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda, I was hoping you would volunteer. So our subcommittee will be Ernie and Brenda, but again, all the meetings will be public, I encourage everyone to attend. Mr. Tigges, did you have a comment you wanted to make before we close this?
Just a couple of comments, please. Um.
Sure.
First of all, I just want to thank, obviously, Kristin, uh, and then Brenda and Ernie were on our small cell subcommittee. We were the first in Massachusetts to come up with a policy application and checklist regarding this. With regards to the consultant, the application was sent to the consultant on August tenth for review, and we do have a contract with, uh, Isotrop, who is our outside RF engineer. They're already under contract, so I would, uh, probably suggest you reach out to Betty McDonough. She's the one that advised the consultant of the upcoming application, so that, that is all in place. Yeah, but, um, so, uh, again, I, I'd be more than happy to work with you to subcommittee because they were great help forming everything before, so I, I'm on board.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Tigges, we will definitely take you up on that offer. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just also want to say that, um, it is Isotrop that we've been reaching out and discussing the matter with, so, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, I think I'm ready for a motion now.
Motion.
Okay, we'll continue, we'll start, we'll, yeah, Ed Parry from, on behalf of Africa?
Go ahead.
Can we get a, can we get a copy of the scope of work once it's done, right, prepared?
Of course.
Certainly, we would be happy to share that with you.
Yeah, um, speaking on behalf of the staff, yeah, um, of course, we just, we, um, wanted to make sure we got the vote and the approval of the board. We intend to send that scope to you early next week and get it signed. As soon as possible, I think you'll probably be, it's pretty general, I think you'll probably be very familiar with what the review will look like, so, but happy to talk to you offline, um, with the department, um, early next week. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to continue, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to continue this mail to the planning board meeting of October fifteenth, twenty-twenty.
I'll second Mr. Raymond's motion.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pema?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Covino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Españo?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, everyone, um, my fellow board members and all the other neighbors that came forward to speak. This is obviously a very, very important issue, and we appreciate everyone's input, and we encourage you to remain involved and, and help us with this. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, we are going to move on now to item F on our agenda. Item F is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four-point-two-point-six-point-twenty-point-one, massage therapy of the zoning bylaws, seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, Tina Bodywork is the applicant. And who is here representing Tina Bodywork? Let's come, pick up and identify yourself.
Yeah, hi, my name is Wayne, uh, I'll be translator for Tina, uh, for Tina Bodywork.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, we are, we are applying for the, uh, to try to get approval for the special permit in order to, uh, run the Tina Bodywork in the Burlington Mall. And, uh, so right now, we are just waiting for, I think, just waiting for the approval from the town. Like, I think the rest of the document that was required from the town that we already submitted.
Okay, thank you. Um, could you take a few minutes to explain to us the nature of your business? I understand it's not a, a full-service massage therapy business, but I don't really understand exactly what you do provide. Could you give us a little overview?
Okay, so, um, Tina is holding the, uh, the massage, uh, therapy license, but, uh, as what we mentioned earlier, uh, agreement with the Burlington Mall that, um, they only provide the, um, bodywork and the foot reflex, reflexology in the mall. So they, they will not do anything with the, I mean, what they call the massage therapy, because massage therapy is like something you do, uh, without the clothes, but bodywork is the one that we clothes on, so.
Okay, is this, this, I, I know, um, there was a business that was in the mall that I saw prior to the COVID crisis that involved people in chairs, and then there was, is, are you that same business person?
Uh, yeah, it, it's the same, same business concept, just like she's taking over the business right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, it's people that are receiving, um, I don't know what's exactly to call it, but some kind of massage therapy in those chairs.
Yes.
Um, are there any private rooms, or is everything out in one common space?
Okay.
Um, so咱们是有那个椅子，椅子和房间
那房间就是门是开的吧，没关吗？
嗯，对
Okay, so for Tina Bodyworks, they will be doing the, um, the room section, but the room is like without door, and the door open, and also they are doing the, the chair massage, uh, and the foot reflexology with the sofa that in the, um, the main area when you walk in to, to the, the lot, so.
So if I understand you correctly, there may be some private rooms, but those rooms are not sealed off, they are open to the main area?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you for explaining that. Uh, Kristin, did you want to jump in before we turn it over for questions?
Actually, I, um, Liz has been following this very closely in the building department, and, um, I think has some comments that we may want to share.
Thank you.
Sure, so, um, one thing that we were looking for, um, the building department, I think that, um, the applicant might have received a comment like this in, um, Viewpoint recently, but we'll be looking for, um, a floor plan of your tenant space, not just of the mall itself, so how you're gonna, um, separate out the, the, your space, um, and what kind of renovations you're going to do with your space, and where, you know, where the massage chairs will be, and, um, how that's going to work out, so, um, that's what we will be looking for. Um, I know that on our electronic permitting system, you have included, um, your massage therapy license. I know that, um, you are not doing massage therapy, but, um, we appreciate that. And what else? That is all that I know that we are looking for, um,
Yep.
For now, that I can think of. Kristin, do you, can you think of anything else that Andy might have been looking for with regards to that?
No, I think you covered most of it. I think internal layout of the space, just to make sure that, that, you know, because as, um, described, it's reflexology and bodywork, and just, um, just wanted to make sure what, that there weren't private rooms, so. Um, that's, that's about it, otherwise, I mean, I think within the mall, the mall has a lot of oversight over their individual tenants, so I think they do part of our job for us. Um, so, uh, overall, I don't have a concern once we get the additional information we need, and then I would anticipate that we can make a decision at the next meeting, if, if we get the information we need.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Um, so I'm going to turn it over now to the board members for questions or comments. Joe and Pema?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Okay, um, Paul Raymond?
Uh, I just have a question. Uh, already in the mall, there are, uh, is massage therapy, if you will, going on out in the open? You see areas like back under the stairs, towards the, towards the back of the mall, where there's a, there was, uh, somebody there that had, you know, a chair, and people would have their face down on it, and they're giving them massages and so forth. And is it similar to that, or, or is it more extensive, or, or, you know, what is it? And that's just my question.
Okay. 趴着也是穿衣服吗？ Okay, so, so for, while, while the bodywork is, is like, either you are face down with the special, uh, massage chair, or you face down on the special massage bed, like, everything is, uh, definitely with, uh, clothes on. Because I know that the thing that got very, uh, confusing is about the licensing, because the massage therapy license and the bodywork licensing that make this thing, you know, confused. Like, like we mentioned earlier, it's like, because that's the agreement with the, the, the Burlington Mall already, like, whatever they do, it's got to be under bodywork and the foot, uh, reflexology only, so.
Okay, thank you. Paul, did you get that?
Yes. But, but it doesn't, uh, well, well, you just have to observe, if that's what it is, it's already going on, I would say, you know.
Actually, Paul, I think.
By individuals, and yet, you wander around there by virtue and get your exercise, and have you seen those, you know, people getting their.
Paul, I think what the applicant was saying is that they are taking over this business, but they're then going to be locating in one particular storefront. So I think it's this, they purchased or they bought out that business, am I correct in understanding that? That question is for the applicant, am I correct in that understanding?
Yeah, i- yeah, he's actually taking over the place, so he's not, not buying over their business.
Right. So they're taking over that business, Paul, so there's, it's not that there's going to be two of them, it's just that they'll be the same one, but they're moving into a storefront location within the mall.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else, Paul?
Nope.
Okay, Ernie Covino?
Uh, no, thank you for clarifying that, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Mike Españo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, one question, do they have any other locations, or is this the first location or only location?
呃，现在是唯一一个
Yeah, it, it's the only, only location for now, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bill Gaffney?
No, no questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Brenda Rappaport?
Nothing to add, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, I already asked my questions, so I think you know what we're looking for you, and from, from you for the next meeting, as long as you can provide that to our staff at least a few days before the meeting, we should be able to vote on this for you at this meeting.
Um, just a real quick question, so, um, you guys is like, request, I mean, the town is requesting for the, the floor plan, so do we have to get a, a planner come over to do all the new measurement again, or can I just request the, um, existing floor plan from, from town, or just from the mall? Because there's nothing, nothing changed at all in the floor plan itself.
I think you could probably get the floor plan from the mall, but then we would want you to detail it out as to where the chairs are and where the rooms are, and if they're closed or not, or if they're open to the rest of the space.
Okay.
So, so the building department was really just ma, wanting a plan to ensure that there isn't any enclosed spaces other than, you know, restrooms and other things, if, if that's the case. So that's what they want to confirm with the floor plan, so, um, I know, I think you submitted a plan of kind of the mall and where the tenant space is, but more specifically within your tenant space itself. And then also to add, um, since we are, since we have be, done virtual, um, meetings, the policy of the planning board is that to, we won't open anything and close anything on the same night. So, um, for this application, we do have most things kind of buttoned up, other than this just one tenant layouts piece, but, it just, that's the reason, that's the main reason you're being continued, is because we can't open and close in one night.
Yeah.
Right, so, thank you. Talking personal, it's just the policy that we have.
Yeah, yeah, we don't say that, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, um, we will be continuing this matter, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.
Sure, thank you.
Do you want a motion on that or not?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter, the planning board meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, moving on, next on our agenda, we have minutes from September third, twenty twenty. I'm hoping that all of my fellow board members have had a chance to review those so that we can vote on them tonight. Is there anyone who is not able to vote on those minutes tonight? No, great, then I'm ready for a motion for that too.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September third, twenty twenty. Second.
Chairman LaRue. Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espa, Member Clerk Españo, or Member Clerk Raymond.
Yeah.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes, yes.
Uh, member. Member Españo, yes. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, um, we have a few matters for discussion. The first one is our twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. I hope everyone has had a chance to review that because we need to vote on that as well tonight. Is there anyone that had any concerns or comments about the schedule before we wrote on it? No? All right, let's vote.
Motion to approve the schedule, planning board schedule, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Wow.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, um, the next item that we have on, for discussion is regarding the rules and regulations for subdivisions. And as you all will remember, we recently voted on some articles that are going to be voted on by town meeting for electronic filing. And after that, assuming that passes, when, we hope it does on Monday, then we need to update our rules and regulations to sort of button the whole thing up. I think that has already been sent to you. If not, it will be sent to you tomorrow morning by Brady, so I'm just asking everyone to please review that so we can discuss it at our next meeting.
So, Madam Chair, they have been sent to, uh, they have been sent to you. They are drafted until we get town meeting to approve them. Then we will finalize them and they will be on our website, so. I mean, overall, it's, it's the substance of the change is literally to take out the things that deal with more cumbersome paper copies and put in electronic. So, um, I want to say two more things for discussion. One, I want to highlight um, the uh, these, oh, actually three. Highlight the new sculpture at the Sculpture Park. I, um, I would like Member Españo and Member um, Rappaport to give us a, a overview of this Economic Development Committee work that we've been doing. And the third one, I just want to make sure that we have a consensus on starting at six o'clock next week. Uh, next week, on the fifteenth. So those three things, so Sculpture Park, Economic Development Update.
All right.
And then.
So here's our, our latest sculpture. I want to tell everybody, this came all the way from Ukraine. And though you really can't tell in the picture, you should all go by and take a closer look because and when you, when you get really close, um, the, the, the cherries are not flat. There's, there's something there for you to see. Um, the, the sculpture is called Global Warming and um, you can read the artist's statement I'll send around another time that it is about global warming and about fruit being the essence of life. And then if you look very closely, you can see um, maps of the world on, on the, outside of these cherries. So it's worth taking a, a look by and, and looking. Um, and then one other thing I wanted to say before we go on to your um, other items, Kristen, is I wanted to take a minute to thank our staff because our staff did a lot of work to make town meeting last night work. It was an enormous challenge having people in person and having people on WebEx and a lot of them. And um, I, I hope no one will be insulted when I say I don't think they could have pulled it off without this, the work of Kristen and Elizabeth and Brady. They did a fantastic job.
Jen. And Jen.
And Jen, of course, I'm sorry, and Jen too.
I had nothing to do with it.
Really supported the town tremendously through town meeting this year.
Well, I will say that, you know, Amy called up and she said, I watched everyone's meetings and she said, you guys seem to have a smooth running show. So she recruited us based on the performance of, of how this is going.
You do, you guys have done a fantastic job.
Also done a very good job. But yeah, uh, huge shout out to Brady and Jen. They, they've, they, you know, they were definitely the people behind the curtain trying to help out as much, as well as, you know, B C A D and I T and, you know, of course, Amy. Amy was maestro of the whole thing, so.
Yes, well, thank you, Jen. Thank you, Brady, and for all your hard work and also Liz and Kristen too. You all, um, I think you did a, a very big service to the town.
I'd like to second that, Madam Chair. I was watching and I was proud to see our staff all over the place and doing a great job, so. Very nice job to all of you. Um, I echo the sentiments. Thank you.
Okay.
Virtual hand clap.
So Kristen, um, I, I've already forgotten the other ones that you meant.
To start the meeting next, um, the fifteenth.
Does anyone have a problem with starting the next meeting at six P M?
Nope.
I don't need a formal motion, I just want consensus. Okay.
Good to go.
Then, um, Bray, uh, Brenda and Mike, we've had a bunch of um, calls with Melissa and Nick and um, Mike Runyon and Paul Sagorino just around economic development and some interesting topics. So I just wanted to not necessarily put you on the spot, but wanted to give you a chance to kind of say a couple of words about, I think there's some big progress being made and I, I feel really good about it.
No problem. I can, I could take this one, Kristen. Um, real brief, guys. So Brenda and I were appointed as economic development liaisons, liaisons to the uh, Economic Development Committee uh, consisting of our, not new anymore, but uh, newish economic developer, Melissa, uh, I always mess it up. Tinkernoculus?
Tentaculous.
Tentaculous. And if, any of you guys have not reached out to Melissa or talked to Melissa, she's wonderful. She is a little firecracker and she's got a lot of great ideas and she is an outstanding hire by the town and is going to be nothing but a, a great asset to the town going forward. We've had, I think, three calls now. Um, today was very interesting. Also on the, the committee, it's Melissa, Brenda, I, Selectman Runyon, Selectman Priest, uh, Kristen sits in in the meetings and sometimes we get Mr. Sagorino in on the meetings. And today was really good. We're met with the folks from Macy's um, and Simon malls and also Justin Fieldhouse from the mall. And what we're trying to do is open a dialogue with Macy's and Simon's especially on the future of the mall and the development of the mall and what's going to happen with the mall. Um, Melissa's got a lot of great ideas and Brenda had some great ideas too. But we want to kind of create the mall into a village and the, uh, I know that right now for retail, it's a, not a great time, but I don't, we're not, we're coming out of it and we're not going to be in this forever. And we want to make sure Burlington remains at the forefront uh, with the uh, visibility and what that town, that mall means to our town. So we are taking a proactive account. Uh, there's some higher ups in the meeting from Simon and uh, Justin from the mall and Macy's and they seem very receptive to having um, the elected officials there and having Kristen there and Melissa there. And they seem really excited that we're all going to try and make a, a collaborative effort with the mall to try and lead it into the twenty-first century and beyond. So if anybody has any ideas or wants to, to chime in, reach out to any of us or definitely, if you haven't taken time to give Melissa a call, definitely give her a call because she's got a lot of great ideas and for the town, so I'm very happy to be working with her and I'm excited to be on that uh, committee.
Great, thank you, Mike. And what's up next, Kristen?
That was, that was all I had.
Okay, does anyone else have any, does anyone else have any other items they want to bring forward? Bill?
Just a couple of your favorite feather signs on the second bike. Right next to the place we're talking about, forty, forty, uh, forty-seven is, there's one right outside the Vietnamese restaurant there. And then as you go down further, uh, there's a couple at Del Frisco's. They're not, because Del Frisco's closed, but the feather signs are for, I think, the burger place uh, in the next Plaza Nova.
Right, and this, this goes on and on and on, Bill. You know, it frustrates me to no end as well. I think that um, unfortunately, we probably aren't going to be doing any new hires anytime soon because I think the only way we're ever going to actually get this resolved is if we have an enforcement officer added to our buildings, building department staff. Um, it was something that I know we all advocated for in the recent past and, and we haven't, we haven't been successful in getting that yet, but I hope that we will at some point in the future. Probably not this year, given the budget, so we'll just have to keep pushing with what little resources we have. But thank you, Bill.
Are we reporting these to building? Because they've been great every time I go to them, especially.
Yeah, maybe just a letter to the, to the uh, to the owner or the, or the.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you, Bill. That's what needs to happen.
And that, there should be a, a tablet. All I need to do is put the name and address and send it off and might, that might do it. I don't know if that's, I don't know.
But even just sending a list to, to building dot, dot, you know, at Burlington.org, they're great. I mean, with the uh, with the Airbnb stuff, I would just send it over and they would jump right on it. So we've got to make sure we're letting them know too.
And maybe, maybe Mike, with your, your group with the business development, maybe you can kind of uh, give a shout out there to say we, we're up for business development, but these take away from that if you're kind of looking at the overall town scenario. So if uh, you know, our Director of Business Development could communicate that maybe to the, to these people and say, hey, we get it, you know, but when you put these feather signs out, hey, you're actually lowering the, the, that level for the town. So can you, can you just remove it? Because it's illegal anyway. Maybe just have that person reach out versus a sign enforcement officer. Maybe it's just a, an informal from the business development person and maybe that might go a little bit as well.
Right. I think a lot of these people are unaware that what they're doing is not allowed. And like you said, Bill, a simple friendly letter reminding them of what the law is would probably go a long way.
Yeah, well, I, I, I hear that, but when these applicants are fairly new, the two that I just mentioned, they've been before us and that you specifically asked them to say, hey, here, you, you know, no legal signs and just to give you a, an idea, no feather sign. You say that to the applicant, if these were, were businesses that have been around for, you know, twenty years or even, you know, five years, I give that to them, but these two had been in front of us in the past, we specifically called that out. So I,
Okay.
You know, I, I don't have as much tolerance for that as you do, I guess, Madam Chair.
I understand, Bill. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other items they need to bring forward at this time? All right, then I think I'm ready for a motion.
Your turn.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman and Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Uh, uh, yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much to staff too. I think that was a very well-run meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.